Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting. For those of you who have just joined us, everyone is currently on mute. I'd like to do a little guidance on how this should work. On your right-hand side, you should have a chat function. This is open to everyone who joins the meeting. It will be monitored by our city manager for public comments. Also, please be aware that if it comes to the public comments and you'd like to speak, you need to be recognized so that you can be unmuted and then we can have a clear discussion. Please also limit your background noise. We will be starting here in about a few seconds. I believe we have everyone here.
Okay. Can you hear us fine, Megan?
I can hear you. I'm unmuting council members as we speak. And I will take the screen down. You're live.
I was hereby given the City Council, City of Alpine, Texas, the hold-in special at 5:30 PM on Wednesday, March 25, 2020, in the council chambers at 803 West Olive in the City of Alpine, Texas, for the purpose of considering the attached agenda. This notice is pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.043, Texas Government Code. Notice, public notice, the use of cellular phones are prohibited in city council chambers. Your needs of the city council. Members of the august will be provided an opportunity to address the council on any agenda item after determination of form and proof of notice of the meeting. Remarks will be limited to a total of three minutes per person. Please write your name on the list so we may call you in order. Please speak into the microphone, locate the podium, and state your name and address. If you had said that you have petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please present it to the city secretary. They largely prohibit the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and or city council members are called upon to order to stop personal attacks. If an individual continues to press the attack against their official or staff members immediately, they may be barred. Calls be ordered. We'll have the pledge.
Okay, we can have pledge.
Well, normally we bypass that on a special meeting.
Do we have a quorum? Cynthia, do we have a quorum? Cynthia, can you hear us?
Cynthia doesn't have audio attached.
Okay, there she goes. Cynthia.
Hold on, let me get her for you guys.
Okay.
Technical difficulties, but there you go.
Okay, so can you, everyone hear me?
Yes, yes. Okay, we have a quorum, man.
Mayor, we do have a quorum and the notice was posted at 2:00 PM on March 20, 2020.
Okay, thank you. Any public comments? Yes, we have none. Presentations, we have none. Before we get to meeting, sir, I'd like to call upon a personal privilege. If the council indulges being that.
Councilman Stevens, Councilwoman Curry, the mayor would like a point of privilege.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm for it.
I want to thank all of you.
Thank you.
I want to thank all of you for being here at this meeting and also at the previous meeting. It's very important that we stay informed as to what stage we are in this crisis. So I appreciate that and I appreciate that you're going out and keeping the public calm and explaining what the situation are or is. The only thing that I would like to stress is I know that the Surgeon General saying towns will die. You know, that's his statement, but right now what we need to do is concentrate on staying healthy. You know, the social gatherings, remember that? And staying at home, you know, if you have nothing, you know, instead of wandering around the town, if you stay at home, that's the way we're gonna, you know, help slow down this virus. So far, we've been lucky. We don't have a case here in Alpine or in Bruce County. So that's good. So kudos to you guys and also to the public. And the chief, I want to thank you for putting the sign hotels are closed. I saw that on both ends of the highway. So good deal. Thank you, sir. And I think that's pretty much all I have to say, but again, try to keep the people, the folks calm down. Don't go out there and say, oh, towns are dying, anything like that, because that'll just create panic. We don't know really how many, if any, if it'll happen in Bruce County or not. So with that said, we'll go ahead and go with the meeting. I don't have a mayor's report. City attorney, you have none?
No, no mayor.
Okay, city manager.
No, sir, not for the special meeting.
Okay, public hearings. Public hearings obtain citizens' views and comments on the ordinance 2020.03.05 in ordinance of the city council of the City of Alpine, Texas, amended FY 2019-2020 budget for the City of Alpine, Texas. You, buddy?
Do we have any participants that would like to make a public comment? We'll give you a... Oh. Okay. No, I think, I don't think we have any comments.
Okay, let's move over to the consent agenda. Minutes, financial reports, department written reports, board appointments. I don't think I'm gonna read all of it because we have none. And we'll move over to the information discussion items. We have none. And item number nine, action items to be accommodated by a brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from if applicable. Action items limited to up to 10 per meeting after being called upon by the mayor or mayor pro tempore. Citizens are required to state their name and the ward at which they reside. Priorities will be given to the citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own business property in the city limits of Alpine will be allowed to speak at its time available. Item number one, city manager.
Honorable mayor and city council, item one is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on Resolution 2020-03-16, accepting the fiscal year 2018-2019, year ending September 30, 2019 audit from Gibson Ruddock and Patterson LLC, City of Alpine auditors. We do have Marlene Stricker with us this evening, but I think it would be appropriate to have a a motion in a second and then we can open the floor for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we take appropriate action on Resolution 2020-03-16, accepting the fiscal year 2018-2019, year ending September 30, 2019 audit forum from Gibson, Ruddock, and Patterson LLC, City of Alpine auditors.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion's made in second. Now discussion.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I thought I would go ahead and present the graphs to you. I'm not sure if you all received copies of them. Did they get copies, Megan?
Yes, and Marlene, can you speak up for us too, please?
Okay, how's this? Is this better?
Yes, and Megan, can you make sure you unmute Rick as well? He's on mute.
Rick mutates himself. Oh.
Yeah, you have to unmute it. There we go.
Sorry about that, Rick. I locked you out.
Oh, you just muted it again, Megan.
I didn't touch him.
Okay, there you go.
Okay. So what I was thinking I would do is go over the graphs. They're a good summary of the financial report and I'm gonna try to share my screen. Can everyone see the graphs right now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the first graph I have is of the governmental revenue. And so that's gonna include all the revenue except for your airport, your gas, and your water sewer and sanitation, because those are considered enterprise funds. So if you look at the blue section of this graph, that is your property taxes. And you can see that you did have an increase in that revenue and that is mainly due to an increase in appraised values. The yellow section is your sales and other taxes and that also increased. And that was a component of different things. There was a $32,000 increase in sales tax and there was also an increase in your hotel tax. But then those increases were offset by a decrease in franchise and other taxes. The next section is the gray, which is your intergovernmental revenue. And you'll see there was a small decrease in that and that has to do with mainly two grants. Your HIDA grant decreased about $35,000 and you received the Stone Garden Grant again this year, which was $28,000. So the net of those was kind of the decrease. If you look at the green section, that's your admin and franchise fee revenue. And as you can see, that remained pretty stable from last year. There was no significant change. The red section is your other revenue and that increased slightly and that was mostly due to your investment earnings. The next graph is your general fund expenditures. So this is just your general operating fund expenditures. Doesn't include your grants or any of your enterprise funds. And you can see the general government, the blue section, increased quite a bit. And I'll go through a few things here that led to that increase. There was about 174,000 of that increase related to salary and benefits and like severance payouts. $93,000 was related to contracted services, which was mostly legal services. There was also a $20,000 increase in your ambulance fee and then a $6,000 election expense, which you didn't have in the prior year. And there was an increase in travel of about $17,000. And then there was also a feasibility study for City Hall that was about $16,000. And the other increases were in building maintenance and supplies because I believe you guys did a little more building maintenance this year. Is that correct, Megan?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. The next section is the yellow, the public works, and that is mainly your street department. And that actually went down and that was a component of two things. You actually had an increase in salaries and benefits of about $65,000, but that was offset because last year there was about 180,000 of road repairs, which you did not repeat this year.
Hey, Marlene, did the did the amount that was paid to KSA for that street study, that $49,000, was that, that was represented in the public works, correct?
I don't know particularly to that invoice, but if it was coded to Department 644, then it would be in there.
Megan, can you clarify that?
Yes, so the engineering expenses came out for, the street study came out of public works. The engineering expenses for the parks would have come out of culture and recreation.
Okay, thank you.
The next section, the red, the health and welfare, that mostly has to do with your animal control and that did have an increase. There was about $35,000 of increases in salary and benefits, $10,000 increase in animal care and supplies. And then they did purchase a shelter cover for the animal shelter, like a cover, and that was about $9,000. And then there was some vehicle purchases of about $15,000. The gray section for culture and recreation, that is mostly your parks and pools. And again, that saw a decrease and that's mainly due to the fact in the prior year there was a purchase of a tractor. And that, you did not have any large purchases this year. The green section is public safety and that includes your fire, your police, and your code enforcement. And that also saw an increase of about $138,000. So that's made up of 121,000 is an increase in salaries and benefits and vacation buyback. There was some of that during the year. The cost software costs increased about $5,000 and then enforcement cleanup was up about $8,000. And then there was some vehicle repairs related to an insurance claim and that was about $5,000 as well.
Hey, Marlene, this is Rick before you move on.
Okay.
On that last chart and the increase in the general portion of the general fund, that's a 30% increase.
Yes.
Say again what the big items were there, because it's relatively flat of roughly $1.2, $1.3 million. That's 30%. Is that mostly salaries?
Yes, some of those severance payouts that were done during last year and then your legal fees increased significantly as well.
How much did legal fees go up?
About $90,000. $90,000 was contracted services and that was mostly your legal fees.
Okay, and I'm only aware of one severance package, so that's $150,000. What was the other $150,000 out of 300?
Well, and then there's, okay, there's also vacation buybacks. So I don't have a specific amount for each one of those, but you know, people did receive salary increases and then the benefits, you know, your benefit costs also were in there, so those went up. The other items were building maintenance and supplies that made up like $33,000. And then increase in travel was about $17,000. The feasibility study was $16,000. And then your election expense, that was only $6,000, but that also contributed. And then the $20,000 increase in ambulance fee, the ambulance service.
So Megan, do you recall where we should be for this year? Because I don't recall the budget being 30% over where we were. I thought we were closer to the $1.2 million.
No, we're actually in line. For what we budgeted, we're in line with it. The expenses did go up significantly because of the salary increases. And then we had all those new positions added. Some of them, of course, are no longer here. And a lot of, it was a lot of spending, Rick, a lot of spending.
Yeah, okay, so we should expect that number to come down this next year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Rick, I think if we can certainly avoid severance and the hefty legal fees, that would cut it down to about 1.425. And then looking at, there was already one vacation buyback. We're working on the adjustment in the policy to... I'm not a fan of the vacation buyback. I think we already have great benefits. And what you're doing is you're increasing your salary by four to 5% with that vacation buyback. So an adjustment there should nip off probably another $30,000 to $40,000. So I think if we can come in below 1.4, then we'll see what the true up is through 2020, 2021.
Okay, I get the 1.4 because of the increase we did on salaries going from a minimum nine and a half up to higher than that, so all that makes sense. I just, I'm blown away by a 30% increase there. Thanks.
Okay.
Hey, Marlene.
All right, this next graph is your general fund equity. And that is basically your reserve to cover everyday operations. And you'll see the purple section is already committed or reserved or restricted. And if you want the detail for that, that would be in the big report that I provided on page 82. And so the 434 is mostly made up of commitments done by council, which are for the Creek Trail and the Fire Department and some other capital improvements. So you know, that's something that y'all have set aside for those projects. The unassigned is what's available for everyday operations. And so you did increase your unassigned fund balance, which is good. And if you'll notice, the small number at the bottom, it gives you the number of days of expenditures you have in your unassigned fund balance. Right now, you're sitting at 100, well, not right now, but as of September 30, you had about 109 days, which is good. The GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends you have between 60 to 90 days as a reserve in case, you know, something happens. So it's, you guys are doing well there in that you have 109 days, right, as of September. I'm not sure where you're at today, but we're good at September 30. The next graph is your water sewer and sanitation. As you can see, the blue bar is your revenue and the yellow is your operating expenses. So you'll notice that the water revenue did decrease some and that is mainly due to lower consumption and fewer accounts. So we, I kind of looked at it and it looked like there were fewer accounts than last year and also the consumption decreased. The expenses that, you'll see that did increase. And again, that relates to contracted, your contract TDS. The rates go up every year according to that contract, so that increased by about $100,000. There was also an increase in depreciation expense because of the assets you're adding to your infrastructure. And then the admin fee went up about $28,000. And there was also an increase in sales tax of about $12,000. These increases were then offset because there was an actual $75,000 decrease in salaries and benefits. And from what I can see, that's mostly due to less overtime than you had in the prior year. And then a lot of turnover in that department left positions vacant for various periods of time.
Yeah, I think, Marlene, the majority of the year, that position did not have a director. That position was vacant. So that probably makes up close to the $70,000.
It went vacant in December of 2019, or 18, rather.
The next graph is your gas utility fund. And the blue section again is your revenue and the yellow is your operating expenses. And you'll see revenue did increase and that was mainly due to an increase in usage. So the expenses decreased, so that's good when you have an increase in revenue and decrease in expense. The decrease in expenses are related to the admin fee decreased about $21,000. And there was about $24,000 decrease in the gas purchase expense because the rate was decreased according to your contract or negotiated rate. There was also a decrease of about $18,000 in meter expense. I'm thinking last year, there was more meter replacements, so maybe they didn't need to do as many this year. And then the last item that also contributed to this, it was those increases or those decreases, sorry, were offset by an increase in, again, your depreciation expense, which is due to adding assets to your infrastructure. And that's it on the graphs. For the audit report, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion for the audit overall. We did, however, have one compliance finding and that is on page 111 of that big report that we sent. And the finding relates to collateralizing of your bank deposits. The Public Funds Investment Act requires that you have your funds insured and collateralized. And there was a few months out of the year where your funds, you had a high balance at the bank and it wasn't completely covered by the FDIC insurance and your collateral line of credit. So we're just recommending that you either move that money into the pool accounts, the investment pools that you have, or increase your collateralization. So again, that finding is on page 111 and management's corrective action is on page 112. So it was a good report. You guys are looking good as of September 30. And like you said, hopefully you can bring down some of those expenses in the general fund and maybe increase, start using that for big projects that you have or, you know, during this time of coronavirus, you might need that extra fund balance, so. The other item we have is the management letter, which I'm sure y'all are familiar with that from last year. And that just is recommendations for improvements to your internal controls or your policies and procedures. Some of the ones, the items from last year are still there this year. And that's mostly due to the turnover and change and policies and everything that you had going on last year. And we added a few extras, but within that letter, it has every, the management point and then our recommendation and of course, management's response. And some of those items have already been addressed or will be addressed within the next couple of months. So I think those are pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, and Marlene and mayor and council, one of the things that Megan and I have been talking about quite extensively the last few weeks, you know, I don't want to call it a major overhaul of our procurement policy, but some significant adjustments in how we administrate to the purchasing and fiscal policy. You know, we're, we were looking back over the last several years and some of these missteps, quite frankly, have been continuous. You know, there's no concern of that we have relative to internal theft, but I think more than anything, it has to do with ensuring that we're getting proper quoting and that we're purchasing after the quotes come in and minimize or mitigate the amount of emergency purchases we have. And I think some of that goes in line with having a strong infrastructure plan specific to water sewer sanitation, water sewer, because that's where, you know, if you've got a break or a leak or an issue, sometimes we tend to really jump out there and start buying things before we've had proper time to that. So my sense is that the changes that we're making will help us and it will be reflected in this next year's audit.
Were there any questions? Oh, sorry.
So, Marlene, this is Rick. I have three questions. You would expect that I would. And they fall into the area of debts, pension, and particularly Note 16, dealing with the landfill. So relative to the debt, we continue to make good progress there. Any special notes from a debt standpoint? I didn't see any. Just wanted to make sure there weren't any from an audit perspective.
No, you do have a debt ratio requirement for your Um, no, you do have a, a debt ratio requirement for your water and sewer fund. Um, and I think it's 1.25, and the calculation is showing that you're meeting that debt ratio. So obviously, you don't want to be issuing a lot of debt in your water and sewer fund. Um, and I do think it's good to keep paying down your debt and become debt-free. That'd be great if the city could do that. I mean, the landfill and pension, you're not going to get rid of those because they're just so far in the future. And the pension, you have a net pension asset right now, so that's good.
Well, that's the point I wanted to raise. As I read through it, it says, looks like we have a million-dollar net asset on that, which is terrific. I don't see any need for a change to strategy for our current pension contribution, but it's nice to know we've got a million dollars more money than we actually need today.
Yes.
That, of course, could all change depending upon how investments go.
Right.
Uh, okay. Then the other question I have is on Note 16 in the landfill. I, I'm not sure if, if Eric and/or Megan shared with you kind of our current issue. We're working our way through relative to the landfill. Uh, and just want to know, one, if you're aware of that, and second, whether you saw any issues from an audit perspective, given we have a current contentious issue relative to a previous owner that our previous operators to say that we're trying to work our way through, whether that came up or not. And it may not have come up this, the fiscal year you're auditing, but probably one you want to address this next fiscal year.
I'm, I'm not sure about that issue. Um, what, what is it exactly? I'm trying to, because I remember something about the landfill, but I don't remember. I want to say that was last year that something came up about the landfill, but what is the issue this year?
Eric, do you want to cover? Do you want me to?
Yeah, yeah, Marlene, I, let me jump in on this one. The, uh, the current landfill operator notified me, um, this past fall, after I, I came back to the city, that as they were opening up a new cell, um, the adjacent cell that had been, um, utilized north of fifteen years ago had not been properly utilized. Trash had only been buried in parts of it down to three feet, were permitted to bury down to twenty feet.
Okay.
So what we're doing now is assessing with, uh, Rod Ponton and I have been working back with the engineering firm that did the previous, uh, certification, the primary engineer there, as well as the, so that the previous operator was bought by Republic Services, so that previous operators no more. So then working back with Republic on their purchase agreement and liabilities there. And then really doing a full assessment of those, that cell and adjoining cell to see the, um, the magnitude of the damage. Um, I, I actually have a guy now that will come out and do the core samples for us. One of the issues we have, Marlene, is, um, finding people to come out and do core samples when you're not in oil and gas company. Uh, it, it has been very troublesome because the oil and gas groups have tended to really suck up those resources. Uh, but I think now with, with where we see the price of, of a barrel of oil, uh, this guy that, uh, was recommended to me, I think he'll be coming out. Once we get past the coronavirus, then we'll get Tom out to do that assessment. So all of that will come out this year, and then, uh, we'll want to address that in the audit this next year.
Right, because the, I'm assuming the engineering firm you're gonna hire will do a new study, so all of the figures will be able to be updated, how full the cells are and everything. So yes, I can see that coming into the calculation for next year.
Okay, perfect. So put that on your radar for us, please.
Okay. And what was your third question, Rick?
You got the third one because you covered the pension, uh, after you talked about the debt. Yeah, so got that covered. We're good. Yep, thanks, Marlene.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Any, anything, Rick?
No, I was just gonna say, I call for the question.
So, go ahead and call for the question. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Oh, which, your post, right. One opposed and the rest, um, are for it. Yeah.
Who was the one that was opposed?
Uh, Councilor Olivas was opposed.
Thank you.
Not on, not on the issue, but right, the reality is that, um, the audio to this is very, very low. Uh, I, I can't really hear eighty percent of what the folks are saying up there, so it's kind of difficult to, you know, carry on a meaningful conversation. Uh, and I would recommend for the future, if we're gonna continue with this, some sort of an application apparatus to amplify what they're saying.
Yeah, well, originally, this was scheduled, everybody to be in their office dialed in. Um, and so we're, we're certainly working on, um, you know, kind of future, how we're gonna do this. But, but we had anticipated everybody would be in their own office, uh, dialed in today.
This is what happens where like this, that bottom just drops. I did too. So, okay, let's move on to item two.
Yeah, item two is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the second and final reading of Ordinance 2020 dash zero three dash zero five, um, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Alpine, Texas, amending the amended fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget for the City of Alpine, Texas.
So, Mr. Mayor, I propose that we approve the second and final reading of Ordinance 2020 dash zero three dash zero five, the ordinance of City Council of Alpine, amending the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget for the City of Alpine, Texas.
I'll second.
What's that?
I'll second that.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? The customer's quell?
No.
Curry?
Nope.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and vote on it. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Five-zero, Cynthia.
Thank you.
We'll go to item three, City Manager.
Item three is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the proclamation issued by Governor Greg Abbott on March 18th, 2020, giving all political subdivisions holding general or special elections on May 2nd, 2020, the ability to postpone that election to November 3rd, uh, 2020. This, this came out, um, as, as shown on the eighteenth. Um, if, if council so deemed to want to postpone the election till November 3rd, um, the discussion and, and, and decision on that could be, could be had today. Um, time is of the essence, as the Secretary of State is looking for pretty immediate responses from communities on whether they want to postpone or not. So with that being said, I know we have to have a motion to get into discussion on that.
Okay, yes, sir.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I would propose that the City Council delay the, uh, uh, special election from May 2nd, uh, to November 3rd for the positions of the City of Alpine of Ward Two, Ward Four, and the mayor.
I'll second that.
Been made in second. Discussion.
So, so I, I, you know, having read through, and I presume everyone else did, it's relatively straightforward. My sense is if we had a good sense about what was going on with the coronavirus, we could certainly make a sense about, you know, whether to delay it or not. We have no earthly idea about what's going on with this bug that's running around that we can't see. Uh, and in my mind, it certainly creates a challenge, particularly for those that are contested, uh, elections, uh, and making decisions about how people would expend their precious financial resources for campaigning in the City of Alpine. Uh, the governor's proclamation is very straightforward. All it does is, doesn't say you can add anyone. Uh, I mean, the, the slates are set. What it just says is you move it out to coincide with the general election, you know, come November 3rd. And in my view, it's, uh, it's the right decision to make, given the unknowns, unknowns do we have right now.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that. I think on the date of, uh, what the governor is proposing, I think we need to kind of revisit that date, because if things happen to start improving, uh, I feel that we can go ahead and start, you know, back with, with the election, uh, because it's so close to the general election, there's gonna be some confusion there. And that's my fear on it, but of course, it's up to council to decide what they, what they want.
So, so Mayor, just to be, just to be clear, I think, so the, the approach and the motion was to delay it to the general election on November 3rd, same as everything else is getting elected.
Well, it's up to council. Okay, so any more discussion then?
Can, can I, I have, I just have a little comment. I've been on the phone with the Secretary of State probably three times a day for the last week. They highly recommend that you postpone till November the third. Um, I had a conversation this afternoon with the Secretary of State, again, just to get more clarification prior to this meeting. And they basically told us that if we don't, they told me if we don't have a percentage of the registered voters to come out for, to, to vote, that we will have to have another whole new election, which will cost us, you know, another six, ten thousand dollars for that. But they strongly recommend that we go to November. Um, the only option, uh, issues that could happen is that we're having it to have it with the, the county. And, uh, the staffing for the judges and the machines, um, could propose a, a problem. Um, the SOS doesn't think it will, but I know that our election administrator, Lauren Usbaum, did have, um, a concern about that.
Yeah, and I know she had concerns, but again, uh, it's up to the council to decide what they're gonna do. Okay, so, uh, any more discussion?
I think November 3rd is a good date, and maybe everybody will go out and, and vote, even, you know, in conjunction with the county.
Okay, any one else? Call for the question. All those in favor of postponing, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Five, nothing. Okay.
Any, there's, uh, City Council member comments and answers? I guess we have none. Just beat the seasons. Okay. Okay, let's move on to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551 dot oh seven one, consultation with attorney, with an attorney, 551 dot oh seven two, deliberation on real property, that five, 551 dot oh seven three deliberations by gifts and donations, 551 dot oh seven four, personal matters, 551 dot oh seven six deliberation about security devices, and 551 dot oh eight six economic development. City Manager.
Yeah, we would need him.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, we do need to go into executive session, which were, will require us to disconnect from this meeting. Megan's gonna leave it open. We all will need to, those who are part of the executive session will come into the other Zoom call that I've set up. And then once we're complete, we'll close executive session and rejoin this meeting. So with that as background, I move that City Council move into executive session.
Okay, and the time?
Six thirteen.
Okay, so you're making a motion. Is there a second? Okay, there's a second.
Who's second?
Councilor Olivas seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we're good, we're good.
If they were good, go into executive session. Okay, there it is.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right, well, yeah, we'll pop over.
See you back in the new one. I'll get the new one set up.
Okay.
Hello there, Megan. We're back.
Hello.
Once we get, we're ready.
Yep.
Cynthia, and we'll be ready to go.
Right.
Perfect.
So, 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 so Mayor, I move that we reconvene the, uh, special meeting of the City Council.
Okay, there's a second here.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. We're back in regular session. Okay.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the City Manager, uh, to negotiate, uh, the purchase of, uh, the property that we have discussed, and that, uh, he come back to City Council, uh, with that negotiated price and recommendation for City Council approval.
Is there a second? Okay, there's a second.
Councilor Olivas had the second, Cynthia.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Five, nothing.
Okay, real quick, guys, there's a case of the virus in Bakers County.
Okay.
Okay, initiate a motion to adjourn.
Uh, so, 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 Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a quick comment. I just want to say thanks to everyone for enduring this process. And Ramon, you make a great comment about we gotta work on the audio. I know Eric and the team's gonna work that, but this seemed to work fairly well. Well done to everyone.
And, you know, we just gotta hunker down and, and, I'm gonna put a little ad, um, thanking the business community for cooperating with us, and also the council and the chief, because we're all in it together. So all we're gonna get to this virus is if we all stick together. And I think our town has done a fantastic job in it. So thank you all very much.
One final comment. Well, last night, Dr. Luki was involved in a very serious accident. He airlifted to El Paso today. His letter, he's got a broken hip. It used to be in our prayers.
Okay. Stay in touch, really give them our best, and prayers are with them. Okay? Thank you very much. Meeting's adjourned.
Thanks, Megan.
Welcome.